The two cheapest schools so far, which is Overbrook and Farrar. We are contracted with the state, so we're meeting that requirement. I have to submit a questionnaire that, and the P O, which is fine, but part of it is that I'm telling the board that we're doing so.
Well, we thank you.
Yes. The roofing update, the roofing company has completed Overbrook, Farrar, and Tuttle Schools, one hundred percent.
Okay.
They're working on the high school here. They were able to suck up all the ballast rock over the Thanksgiving weekend, the three days, and they are power washing and cleaning the roof before they seal. Only the troublesome part that we get leaks in the most over the winter to protect that. And then, once the spring hits, they'll look at the middle roof.
It's okay, like, if it's warm enough for them to do that?
Yeah, they're really gonna go until they can't any further, but they want to at least get those areas sealed for us to rent that in there. The academy playground, I believe all the structure is ninety percent complete. I think there's some swings that need to get attached to the poles, but other than that, everything is in its place. And they will be moving on to the P I P installation, which is the rubberized flooring.
On that note, how about the swings at Le Mauvin?
So, the swings at Le Mauvin today, they went there after they completed the academy. They dug out the foundations. They said there was no structural damage or anything to the existing cement, but they poured more cement around each of the footings with rebar to connect to the existing. So, once that dries, we should be good to clear for those.
So, that, like, remember, like, you took on the swings, if you swayed too hard, it, like...
Yes, so, like, that's why we, that's why we called them out. They came to check, and they said when it was swinging, that when they dug it out, the concrete wasn't actually mov- moving, that it was the type of structure chosen, the material chosen, that it's a little weaker than others. So, that's why you're seeing a little sway. But they reinforced it today, so hopefully within the next couple of days, we're clearing ground back and putting the swings back up.
All right. All right. That's all good.
That's all we have here.
Okay.
Let's see, have any questions?
No. While we're waiting for our artist residency presentation, why don't we go ahead with policy?
Sure. Can I go to the Title IX personnel and Title IX students' policies first?
Yeah, 'cause we're not bringing up one-one-one-three-three-oh unless everyone's here, because those that wanted to make changes are not here, so it would...
Yep, and I didn't make any changes on the policy that became, came before the board this evening. But the two Title IX for personnel and students are based on the U.S. Department of Education's two thousand twenty-four amendments to the Title IX rule. Those policies are, come from Shipman and Goodwin, and they adhere to all of the amendments that were made, and some of those include the term sex-based harassment has been defined more broadly to include harassment based on sexual orientation and gender identity. The final regulations permit more flexibility and informality in the procedures that schools can use to address it, to account for variations in size, student population, and administrative It allows schools to use a single investigator model, and schools may choose to use this model in some, but not all cases, as long as it's clear in the grievance procedures when they will use this model. And they may offer an informal resolution process for sex discrimination complaints unless the complaint includes allegations that an employee engaged in sex-based harassment of a student, or unless such a process would conflict with federal, state, or local laws. They, new regulations expand privacy protections for students and others involved in the discrimination claims. They provide more explicit and broader requirements for districts to support students and employees based on pregnancy or related conditions. If a complaint or respondent is a student with a disability, the district, we have to, we are required that the Title IX coordinator consult with one or more members of the student's I E P or Section five oh four team. And the Title IX coordinator has to attend specific training, along with all district employees, and they may also be the decision-maker under the single investigator model. And also, we have to maintain for seven years each notification received by the Title IX coordinator of conduct that reasonably may constitute sex discrimination under Title IX regulations.
And is it fine to read?
It's based on the, the preponderance of evidence collected through the investigation. So, those are some of the major changes. It's big, but, you know, Shipman did all the training for every single district employee, and a higher level of training for district administrators, and then even a higher level of training for district Title IX coordinators.
Okay. Have a name?
Yep.
No questions? Everything's as should be. All right, we move on to students? Is it, or did we, which one was the first one?
The first one was personnel, and the second one was students.
Okay, so, we got, they're both pretty much...
Yeah.
I don't have any questions on either.
Michelle, we had revised this policy, remember, when those legislative updates that you went to came through? So, this is another revision in a short period of time, but obviously required.
Yeah. I mean, there's really not much discussion for these because it's mandated, so it's not...
The complaint form is included in the policy, but we are not required to include any of our paperwork or documentation that we use for investigation purposes, and Shipman is still...
I think that makes sense, though.
Yeah, still hasn't provided those templates, so in the interim, we do have a template that, that we've been using and will continue to use until Shipman releases theirs.
Okay. All right. Productive workshop, people.
Which red news is the new, right?
Yeah, red is new. All right. Yeah, they're gonna try to make it for seven, but we're starting our meeting at seven. We're gonna, if everyone's not here, we don't have the horn, we're done. I'm not hanging out all night.
No.
No. All right.
I don't understand.
Busy time of year. Uh, let's see. So, when is our presentation coming for the three members that unfortunately cannot be here tonight?
So, I think the other member, the other presenter is stuck in traffic?
He's on his way from Cranston, Rhode Island, on ninety-five. He, last update, he said he'd be here around six-twenty, but that was an hour ago, so he'll probably happen since then. I could reach out and see where he is if you'd like.
You could, because if he's really still stuck in Rhode, in Rhode Island, I would tell him to go home.
My guess would be that he's somewhere in the, you know, Branford, Gilbert, you know.
Oh, so, that's somewhat close, yeah. Yeah, okay, oh, all right.
That would be my guess, yeah.
If he thought he would be here around six-twenty, he's probably closer. He would have probably...
Thanks for calling, getting an update.
Oh, I, in the interim, there is one more policy that's on your table that I would like to review.
Okay.
It is nondiscrimination, Section five oh four.
Oh, okay.
This policy was reviewed in two thousand twenty, but does require some updates.
Okay.
When we reviewed it in two thousand twenty, we, we did not have Bob's name on it. It was a former people's vice director. So, we made that correction, and we just tightened up some of the language, and updated some of the legal references and statute references. But I, you know, I know it's not on the agenda this evening, but it is sort of related to the Title IX policy.
It is.
And so, if at all possible, and the board meeting does get opened, I'd like to add it.
Okay, that's not a problem. Again, we're just kind of tidying up and...
Yep.
No major changes, just what's required. So, yeah, I see no problem with it.
Perfect, so, at some point during the regular meeting, if it happens, we'll add six point seven.
Sounds good. Tia, you got an update to, so remove the calendar that you had? I got an update. You were given a new one.
Right.
So, get rid of the one that's in your packet.
Yes, ma'am.
It's on the last page in your packet, just wait for it.
Well, I moved things around. I did, okay, but I did use the right take. Yes, I did.
All right, give it, yeah, take it, you don't even get to see what was on it.
I already lost.
I bet you don't remember.
I bet I do.
Let's see if you can tell what the changes are.
Where's the new?
Right there.
Here.
Right there. Here, water bottle.
Oh, gosh, sorry. I'm used to colors of calendar.
We're testing Tia.
I did notice, let's see. You moved to November.
Ah, she got us.
She did?
She did, yes, she got us.
You know, when I do get it, I get it, and I'll surprise you all, 'cause I did, didn't I? I knew that. I'm gonna tell you, I looked at that. So, that's your thing.
All right, so, I think we could wrap up our workshop for this evening, unless we have, whoa, we're waiting for the presentation, so pause it. I guess...
And then, we'll record it, and we'll send it out to all board members to watch, and/or I could play it during the superintendent's report at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
...
And as Dr. DeLucia mentioned at the last meeting, we did head down to New Jersey last month to U.S. Bands Nationals, and we did win our division, which is... Thank you. Now, what you may not know is that a good portion of that win can be directly tied to our growing partnership with a DCI drum corps called Seventh Regiment. We've got some members of their staff here tonight with us. They're going to speak later. Now, before I go on with that, there has... Often, when I talk to non-marching band people, find there's a little bit of confusion about what drum corps is and how it works. So just very briefly, I'd like to sort of go through what it is. So DCI drum corps are competitive, basically competitive marching bands. There's some slight differences, but it's effectively competitive marching bands that are independent from any school or university. They compete during the summertime, when all of those schools are on vacation, and the membership is made up of students from schools all over the area. It's basically an audition group, kind of like regionals, or all-state, or honor bands, or something like that. It's really the best of the best high schools, best of the best kids from all the marching band high schools in the area, and they come together to form this, like, you know, super-band nerd all-star team to go out and compete with all the other super-band nerd all-star teams from all the other states. And when I say "all the other states," I mean, this is national, sometimes international competitions, and the shows that they put on are... I mean, we're not talking about just walking down a parade route, spinning a couple batons, not that there's anything wrong with baton swirling, but I mean, these are wildly, wildly complex and sophisticated shows. If you've ever had a chance to see one, the level of... And this is coming from a professional performer of 20 years. The level of performance we're talking about here is on par with Broadway-level performance. In fact, there was actually a drum corps back in the '90s that did exactly that. They took their product and they put it onstage and created a Broadway production that ran for... Do you know how long BLAST ran for? Like, five years? And there's still a tour group running 25 years later? That's the level of performance we're talking about. So the best description that I have come across for it is that it's professional marching band, although it's not really, and I'm going to come back to it in a minute. But just so you can... Me talking about it only shows a little bit. I've got one of their videos that kind of explains what it is. It's only a couple minutes. I'm just going to let DCI themselves tell you how it looked.
From its modest beginnings half a century ago, Drum Corps International has developed into a powerful, global youth activity with far-reaching artistic, educational, and organizational influence. Through its nationwide summer tour and annual world championships, Drum Corps International provides entertainment to millions through spectacular stadium performances, livestreamed events, high-definition digital cinema experiences, and worldwide social media exposure. Drum Corps International is marching music's major league. More than 12,000 student performers audition each year for a position in a DCI ensemble. There is a highly loyal, connected past participant base of more than 150,000. The 10-week DCI summer tour touches nearly 40 states each year, drawing some 400,000 spectators to more than 100 competitive events. Combine this level of exposure with decades of unparalleled event production excellence, and the letters "DCI" are synonymous with success. DCI's innovative sound sport program provides unique performance opportunities for instrumental music ensembles of all types and all ages in dynamic performance settings around the world. Another exciting DCI brand extension is the wildly popular Drum Line Battle Program, which showcases marching percussion ensembles in high-energy, face-to-face, and virtual online competitions. DCI's continuously expanding portfolio of innovative program offerings and educational initiatives creates tremendous opportunities to address very focused and enthusiastically engaged target audiences in a variety of formats and platforms. Worldwide, Drum Corps International influences scholastic, collegiate, and independent marching bands, as well as dance and drill teams and competitive color guards. To each of these thousands of groups around the globe, the Corps of Drum Corps International represents the pinnacle of achievement. Drum Corps International is the standard of excellence in the marching arts. So whether you support DCI as a valuable youth activity, an incomparable educational opportunity, or just great entertainment, Drum Corps International is marching music's major league.
So the way that it's structured, drum corps in general, that's the activity, kind of like football is the activity. DCI is the organization that runs all of the competitions and runs all the programs, as you just saw there. And there are individual member... Kind of like the NFL runs competitive football. And then there are individual corps all over the place that they're the ones that compete, kind of like the individual NFL franchise teams all over the place. Our local one is Seventh Regiment. There are, at this point, only about what, 40 youth drum corps around left? And having one of them so local and so willing to partner with us is really cool. So that said, I've mentioned that it's a professional marching band, but it's not really professional for a couple of key reasons. Number one is that, I mean, it's not professional performers. This is a youth educational activity. The membership age cap for the youth portion of it is 21. There's nobody older than 21, and there are some drum corps that specifically, like Seventh, that specifically target high school students, like that's their main demographic. The instructors are not... They're music educators. Almost all of them are public school music teachers or college music teachers. And while they do put on an amazing show, as I'm sure you just saw, that's not the main purpose. The main purpose is to be an educational organization and provide incredibly high-level performance opportunities for students and growth for future music educators. That's a big one, that last one. I grew up in a drum corps called the Boston Crusaders. I marched with them for five years. In fact, that picture right there, that's a little 19-year-old Steve Wolf right there, holding up his euphonium. These guys both marched drum corps for years. In fact, if you went to Nationals with us last month and got all of the band directors there in a room, I would say probably 80, 90% of them marched with a DCI drum corps in their youth. I mean, it's incredibly, incredibly formative for band directors and music educators. It's a vital part of the training process for us. And frankly, I can attribute almost all of the skills and habits that I have that have led us to success here to drum corps. That said, it's also not a professional group because the performers don't get paid at all, nothing. These are student performers. They in fact pay dues to be part of the organization to do it. It can be anywhere from $2,000 a year to $8,000 a year, depending on how big the corps is and how far they travel and stuff like that. I mean, think about it, you know, for an average teacher, that's two months' salary to let your kid go do this thing, because usually it's parents that pay for it. But it's not because the drum corps are greedy. It's... I mean, they're not making any money on it at all. They're struggling to stay in the black. They're all 501(c)(3) nonprofits. It's an educational organization. It's just that the expenses to run a group like this are astronomical. I mean, everything from... Like, you saw the nationwide tour, getting buses and 18-wheelers and trucks traveling all over the place, the fuel costs for that, feeding everybody in a 50, 100, 150, 200-person organization, depending on the drum corps, staffing, instruments, equipment, repairs, insurance, licensing, it just goes on and on and on. Some of the big groups have budgets that stretch into the millions. I'm talking, you know, the really high-level groups. But of course, this is still America in 2024, and while things are a little different in East Haven, and I'll come back to that, with a wider society doesn't tend to value arts education like they value, say, sports, or STEM education, or any number of other things, and nobody's cutting a check for millions of dollars for a group of kids to go do fancy marching band. So the getting the money to make this happen, it's just a tough nut to crack. If you go back 50 years to the '70s, even further, the '50s, '60s, there were 50, probably over 100 drum bugle corps in New England. Nowadays, there are, like I said, three. There's Seventh Regiment here in Connecticut, there's the Boston Crusaders in Massachusetts, and there's Spartans up in New Hampshire. And those are the only ones that have managed to survive through the economics of arts management. So that's what brings us to this idea. I've been talking to Greg about forming a strategic partnership with Seventh Regiment because, you know, we're not a million-dollar organization, our marching band, but we still have a lot of massive needs, and so do they. And one of the best ways, rather than just fundraising, and, you know, the district provides a lot of funding, and we do a lot of fundraising, of course, so does Seventh Regiment, but one of the best ways to cover costs is to form partnerships with other organizations that have mutually beneficial resources and needs. So the idea being that instead of them cutting us a check, they provide us a service or something that costs them little to nothing, and we provide them a service or something that costs us little to nothing, and then both groups benefit. It's very similar to what's called an artist-in-residence deal, that lots of schools and colleges work with local performers, artists, musicians, theater coaches, et cetera, where that artist, or in this case, group, will be the artist-in-residence for that school, and they provide their expertise, their knowledge, their resources, training for the students, while the school then gives them a place to work on their art, work on their performances, do whatever it is. This is a very standard practice in the arts as an artist-in-residence program, and that's basically what we're pitching here. In corporate world, it's called a strategic partnership, but it's effectively the same thing. So in our case, what we need that Seventh Regiment can provide is, one, high-level training for our advanced students. These three, these are East Haven students. That's a picture from about three months ago, when they got off the field at finals. Those three kids, that's Evan, Elijah, and Tara. Tara's, by the way, one of the kids that goes and plays taps on the green.
I heard she did a great job.
Oh, this is amazing. But the training that they got over the summer is just incomparable. I mean, I'm going to come to their staff in a minute. It's the kind of stuff that we... I have to teach all the students, and I can't always push the high-level ones as far as they possibly can go, and that's what a group like this does. It allows them to push to their extremes of their abilities and get better and better and better and better. Also, equipment sharing. As an example, that one that you see right there, that's a marching tuba. Buying a new marching tuba costs about $13,000. We need a new marching tuba. However, I don't have infinite budget money, as I'm sure you know. We have to do more with less here. And an item like that, that can only be used for one thing, is not something... I try to spend my budget money on stuff that can be used across the program by multiple different ensembles, by multiple different classes. This would only be able to be used by one kid for one thing. Spending $13,000 on that is a hard pill to swallow, but Seventh has, what do you have, five or six of them kicking around?
We have eight of them.
Yeah, that aren't even being used in the fall, and we could just borrow one. You know, that kind of equipment sharing is going to be a huge benefit. And then, of course, their staff, I mean, they're some of the best marching band experts on the East Coast. I'll be able to... Me and my staff will be able to consult with them on show design, on teaching techniques, on ideas, on all sorts of stuff. They've also expressed interest in doing a... I didn't put this on the slide, but they've expressed interest in doing a performance on the East Haven Green in the summertime, like a music on the green kind of thing. And I'm sure, this is just the beginnings of what I'm sure will be a huge, huge benefit to our school in terms of partnering with an organization like this. Now, on their end, it's pretty simple. They just need a place to practice and a place to stay. So we've got a gorgeous field, we've got an amazing facility, and the vast majority of their season is during the summer, when nobody's here and nobody's using it. I mean, at that point, it's kind of a win-win. Now, that said, as it was discussed last week... I'm sorry, hold on. Got lost in my thing. Yeah, so it is a little odd. Now, Mr. Hennessy said last meeting that it's a school, not an Airbnb. I liked that. I thought it was funny. It was a good line. But the thing is, they don't actually need an Airbnb or a hotel. I've done... I mean, you may not be able to tell from my svelte physique here, but I spent many years marching DCI, and these groups are... I mean, they've... That picture there on the right was from a video that a news channel did where they studied some DCI performers. The level of athletic activity that they're doing while they're on the field is equivalent to that of marathon runners, sometimes even exceeds marathon runners, for 14 hours a day. I'm not kidding when I tell you that I did not look like this when I was 19, right? Like, I mean, they are pushing themselves incredibly hard all day, not only playing incredibly high-level music, but it's an extremely athletic activity. Just as an example, I marched five summers of drum corps, and I did one summer of basic training with the Army, and without a shadow of a doubt, that summer of basic training with the Army was the easiest out of those six years. It wasn't even close. And so this is what an average day looks like. When they get to lights-out, I mean, this is not a slumber party on the gym floor. They're exhausted. They just need a place to inflate their air mattress and crash and pass out for seven hours so they can get up and do it again the next day. It's not happy fun times, it's "Oh, my God, please let me sleep time." And I mean, that's, you know, the fun is not the driving factor. You just need to get some sleep. And you don't need a hotel for that. You just need a dry room with a roof and somewhere you can put an air mattress. I mean, back in the day, they used to do it in VFW halls and things like that. But for our purposes, a gym or a cafeteria works totally fine. They don't need a full hotel room with, you know, all the amenities that come with it. They just need somewhere to crash. So... And by doing it that way, the drum corps saves 80, 100, 150,000, 200,000, depending on the size of the corps. When we're talking about the economies of scale with an organization like this, it makes a big, big difference for them to be able to just cut that one spot out of their budget, the place to stay. Now, I grew up sleeping on a gym floor, so I know I did... It sounds a little wacky to everybody else. It's normalized for me. And there are some concerns, of course, that it's not an expected use of a school facility. One of the concerns that was raised last time was about safety, and there were some questions asked about that. I can tell you, having been around this activity for 25 years, I've never even heard of anything happening, anything like any of the safety concerns that were brought up last time, for reasons that will become fairly clear in a second. In fact, the only safety concern that I've ever heard about was in the other direction. It was actually this past summer, there was a drum corps that wasn't able to get a school to stay at, so they ended up having to stay at the only hotel they could afford, which was kind of a crummy hotel in Groton, and some drunk guy came in and pulled a knife on a parent volunteer. The guy had nothing to do with the drum corps. He just wandered in because they happened to be at the hotel. That would never, ever have happened if the drum corps had been staying at a school, right? And for me, it's really important for me to send my students to do things like this. And I feel way, way, way safer about it, knowing that the drum corps will have a school to stay at, which most of them do, and frankly, that's what I'm hoping that we can do here, is be part of the solution, not the problem. Now, the... Not that we are. Like I said, East Haven, and the reason I even felt comfortable coming to the administration with this request is that the support for the arts here has been fantastic. I have never felt like I wasn't supported for anything, and it seemed like this would be a good place to maybe try to make some of this happen, because, you know, a group like this, you know, they need a home. So now, that said, just continuing on with the concerns here, please understand that the kids that are doing this, these are not your average high school knuckleheads. These are the best of the best musical elite. This is the music equivalent of bringing the valedictorian and the salutatorian from, like, every high school, like, together to, like, you know, what, academic decathlon, or Model UN, or something like that. It's the musical equivalent of that. These kids are... These are the ones that never cause issues in their school. They're the go-to leaders of their school. And even more than that, they've spent thousands of dollars to do this. They're not going to do something stupid to jeopardize that and get kicked out. They're there to work and learn and perform, and that's exactly what they do. On the other side of that, even if there were some knuckleheads there, which there aren't, but if there were, the staff that runs this, they're not just random adults either. These are highly-trained music educators, as I'm sure you saw from the video there. I mean, you can't do that without incredible training. Almost all of them are certified public school music teachers. Most of them are band directors, some of them from some of the most successful programs in Connecticut and Massachusetts. Some of them are colleagues I've known for 20 years. I mean, just in terms of trusting them, like, understand that what I'm asking here is for them to be able to use, you know, my classroom, my bandroom that I teach in all day, and I have no compunction letting them do so. That's how unconcerned I am about an issue. And even more than that, they know that if there is a problem, they're not going to have access to the school anymore, and it'll cause a big issue for the group. One of their highest priorities, aside from student safety, is making sure that the facility is taken care of. And Greg will be able to speak to that a little bit later. They've got some philosophies with their particular organization. All of their staff, they're all background-checked, they're all fingerprinted. They can probably do so in East Haven if that's required. I'll let Greg speak to that. And then the one last thing concerned that was brought up was about scheduling. So there were some questions like, "Well, what if another group comes in and wants to rent it? We'd lose that revenue." So two things. First of all, the way this agreement is drawn up is it's done in priority order. The first priority, first and foremost for us, is East Haven public school students. If there's an East Haven event, it takes priority, period. That goes with the rental events, too. The second priority is people who are going to pay for the space. If there's somebody paying for the space, you know, they get it, I mean, after the public East Haven events, right? And then if there's availability beyond that, that's when Seventh Regiment would be able to use it. And we've talked, they understand that. This is not news to anybody. And if something did come up, you know, they would have to find somewhere else to go. However, something that... I know some of you are aware of, some of you may not be. I'm actually the one that coordinates all of the rentals for the auditorium. I run all the staff, I coordinate with all the clients, I do all the tech for that stuff. I am intimately familiar with our rental schedule and our clients, and we've already... I mean, the dates that were proposed are ones that Greg and I have already gone through to make sure they don't conflict with any of our typical rentals. In fact, most of the weekends that they've asked for, we've never had anybody ask for a rental. They're just... Those organizations aren't functioning on those weekends. But again, if there were, they would have to find somewhere else to go, and we would have plenty of notice on that. Rental clients don't come to us with two weeks' notice. They come to us with six months' notice, so we've had plenty of time to work that out. So with that said, I've talked for a long time. Greg and Scott came here for a long way, so I'm going to let them come up and talk to you, but just the last thing I'll leave you with is that I spent a long time doing this, both on the public school side and the drum corps world. I've seen a lot of partnerships that do/don't work, and I'd like to think over the past few years, I've built some credibility around here that I kind of know what I'm doing, hopefully. And I mean, this partnership will be really good for both organizations. And we're not asking for, like, a big 10-year commitment or anything. We're asking to just try it for this school year. And if it goes well, great, then we'll continue into the future. If it doesn't go well this year, well, then we'll part and, you know, go our separate ways. But I'm fairly confident that it's going to work really well, and it's going to benefit everybody. So Greg, did you want to come up and speak? So this is Greg Arsenault, band director at Cranston High School East in Rhode Island, and the director of the Seventh Regiment.
Hi, thank you. Thanks, Steve. So as Steve said, I'm the band director at Cranston High School East in Rhode Island, which is a very similar community to East Haven, to be honest with you. So I feel really comfortable with sort of the feel and the community. And I got to know, you know, some of the students from here and some of the parents, and, you know, I thought that this partnership would be just a great thing. I've been doing marching arts for 34 years since I was in college. I've been teaching high school marching band for 30 years. I've been a band director for 21 years in the same school. So I have a ton of experience. I also teach jazz band, percussion, music production, marching band, concert band, regular percussion class for non-music kids, and special ed, and I have MLL students, and you name it. I've seen just about everything. When people say to me, "Wow, Greg, you're always so cool," I'm like, "I've seen and done everything." You know, I've taken school groups to Disney World, I've taken school groups to Washington, DC, to New York, I took my percussion ensemble to Dayton, Ohio, last spring for the world championships. I've been with Seventh Regiment twice to the DCI World Championships at Lucas Oil in Indianapolis. So I'm really very familiar with kids and with education, with managing staff, and I feel really confident that that's... I can be safe, we can be safe, and we have policies that speak to that. DCI, Drum Corps International, requires us to have policies about sexual harassment, about conduct, about disciplinary action. Staff never intermingles with students outside of rehearsal. We always keep things very separate. Everybody has their own spaces. We have our own shower blocks. We have our own times for students who are under 18 and over 18. And so we keep everything very segregated in terms of the important safety issues. We have a new DCI protocol that's coming out, which I've just been learning about for background checks. We have done background checks, but we've had our own company that we've contracted with. Now, we're going to be contracting with the same company for every DCI drum corps, and they're coming out with a new protocol for safety. Previously, we've done Safe Sport, which some of you may know. Safe Sport training, you know, is for coaches. We've done Safe Sport. So I'm, I think, Safe Sport Level 2 trained myself, and that's required of all the staff. Now, there's going to be a new training protocol for safety about all of those issues, harassment, bullying, all of that kind of stuff. We have a member handbook that addresses all of that. We have a staff handbook that addresses all of that. We make the members, if we decide to invite them to become a member, they sign a contract that they understand the handbook, they understand the commitment, et cetera. So this is a very serious endeavor. It's quite a bit different, actually, from when we marched, when they were just, "Here's some sticks, here's a drum, go." But that was 30 years ago. And obviously, we all know, this is a very different society and time we live in right now, but we are very safety-minded. My number-one thing is education. These kids are here to get educated. We're here to teach them. Second thing is their experience, traveling around the country, being safe, seeing different parts of the world, well, seeing different parts of the United States. And then the third thing is the competitive piece. And my sort of philosophy is if the education and the experience are there, we have excellent places to stay and rehearse, we have excellent staff, excellent educators, and we give them a great experience, really good food, really good places to be, then they're going to have a great experience, and we're going to be competitively successful. So competition is like the third piece of the puzzle for me. So we do, we have an extensive list of educators on our staff. I was really digging into it in the past week or so, and every one of our staff members has at least a bachelor's degree, most of them in music education. Some of them have advanced degrees, like Dr. Greg Goslin from the University of Miami, who is now the associate band director at the University of New Haven. He's actually my son's band director at New Haven. And so he comes to us, and he's a great pickup for our brass program. My... I have two sons in the drum corps. So I'm not only the director and an educator, I'm also a parent. So I see it from both perspectives, and I think that gives me kind of a unique look into the world of this competitive drum corps thing we do. My older son plays snare drum, my younger son is in the color guard. Our membership coordinator has a child in the drum corps. She has a PhD in special education, and she's the department head for special education at Southern Connecticut State University or State College. So we have great, great people on the admin team and in the education staff, especially Scott Winship, who's my assistant director, also a multi-decade experienced music educator, also was in the Marine Drum and Bugle Corps, was also in the Boston Crusaders. We marched around the same era, although didn't march together. Steve marched a few years after us, but we come from sort of the same stock of the drum corps world. So I don't know if you guys have any questions, but I'd be willing to answer anything.
There were a lot of questions last time, we're both here to answer them.
Yeah.
Or if there are none here, certainly, I know, I know some of you are going to be watching this on video later, you can obviously feel free to email me, swolefeat@easthaven and all that stuff, and I can get you answers to whatever you need.
I think it was great to hear of all the benefits to the students, and as long as, you know, you're all on top of school, you know, and rentals take priority, because we were worried that we were going to have to be locked into all the dates, and we just want to make sure, you know, there's going to be flexibility, of course, because we wouldn't want to lose revenue.
Of course. I don't either. I mean, the money helps my space.
Yeah, I know that as well. So I don't have any further questions. I mean, I'm good. T?
No, I mean, I was worried about, like, just insurance-wise and just making security, you know, no one comes in and they, you know, watching, and that's a lot of, I don't know how many will be here sleeping over. Is it a lot?
Typically, it's between 40 and 60. And with myself, Scott will be here, Judy will be here, plus our instructional staff will also be here, and many of them are veterans of drum corps and have taught for, you know, many, many years as well, even though they're quite a bit younger than us, they still have quite a bit of experience. So, yeah, we'll have a number of adults here.
You call me old?
Well, I'd probably beat you by at least 10 years.
Like 100 kids, 200.
I really did. That was like in my head. I was thinking much larger numbers and...
I wish.
Some drum corps are that large, Seventh Regiment is not there at the moment.
Okay.
That's an amazing opportunity.
Yeah, it's really cool.
So does that group travel during the summer?
Yes, yeah, so...
Does it all go with them all over the...
Yes, yeah, so we get in two coach buses, and we have two semi-trucks and a box truck, so one of them is our equipment truck, 53-foot equipment truck, with some of the equipment that Steve would love to borrow for his program, which, so my program and Seventh Regiment have done borrowing, so this is something that's certainly, you know, has been done in a number of cases. So, yeah, we will be headed out. Our first part of our tour is kind of local. We have a show at Shelton High School, we have a show in Clifton, New Jersey, but then we come back and do several July 3rd and 4th parades in Massachusetts, although we've been talking about maybe doing one locally, potentially in Madison, Connecticut. And then we also will have a community performance.
Is this one not working?
No, it's fine. We'll have a community performance, I believe, in New London in the middle of July. Then we head out to Pennsylvania, we have three shows there, we have a couple of shows in Ohio, we have a show in Michigan, and then we end up in Indiana, Marion, Indiana and Indiana Wesleyan University for our championships. We're the open class, so we're, if we use the NFL analogy or Major League Baseball, so you have your top-level teams, and then you have your sort of feeder teams, right? We're a feeder team, right? We're not the college-age 20, 21-year-olds, for the most part. My son will be 19, but he'll be one of the oldest kids in the group, actually. We'll average probably around 17.
And then they ask a question?
Yeah.
By doing that, and they go to the competition, do these children then have the opportunity to possibly, I guess, kind of audition for some of the higher level?
So usually, one of the ways that the activity works is often, no student is going to be switching corps in the middle of the season. But they'll often do an open-class corps like Seventh Regiment, and then the following year, go audition for another corps. In fact, Tara has her sights set on Crown, I think she wants to go to, so, which I'm pretty sure she's going to make it, so.
Yeah, in fact, my son is, he's going to march one more year with Seventh Regiment, this will be his third year, my snare drum-playing son, and then he wants to audition for the Phantom Regiment out of Illinois.
Well, you ended the schedule discussion early. The best part of it is that finals is at Lucas Oil Stadium where the Colts play, they get to play in that stadium. It's an incredible place to perform, it's really, really cool.
Yeah, it's a really, really cool experience. We go to the world-class prelims, and we get to perform there. Even though it's early in the day, it's still amazing to walk out on that field and just be like, "This is amazing," and however thousands of people are in the audience at that point, it's a very cool experience overall.
Steve, how many East Haven students do you think would be participating?
Well, so the audition, I mean, right now, I have no way to say. The audition camp is in a couple of weeks. So last year, there were three. I can say fairly confidently that if the auditions aren't here, it'll probably be zero. But I know there's at least two thinking about it, there might be a couple more. I'm not exactly sure, it depends how it shakes out. It is, I mean, no matter how you slice it, it's a lot of money. There are some kids that have to save for a couple of years to be able to do it. I know there's seven or eight that are really interested in doing it, but I don't know if they're going to be able to do it this year. I'm not really sure, so.
Are there scholarships for kids?
Yep.
Yes.
And fundraising opportunities and...
Yes, yeah. Our board of directors is willing to sponsor kids, especially kids who play brass, so mention it to your brass players. Yeah, so our board of directors is willing to sponsor kids who have financial hardship. There are scholarships available through DCI. Those are usually announced in January, so the kids kind of have to plan ahead or at least have a little bit of wherewithal to sort of do the audition fee, et cetera. But here's what we've also talked about, waiving the audition fee for East Haven students, waiving the callback fee, which, the audition fee is $100, the callback fee is $40. That would be to come to the January camp. And then any, if any kids happen to want to come in, say, a little later in the season, we usually charge them like $25, basically to cover food for the weekend. We would waive that, and we would also give them a 5% discount, which all told is about a total 10% discount on the cost. The cost of March 7th Regiment is $3,100, but it's essentially once a month plus six weeks of summer. If you compare that to any sort of sports camp or music camp, it's on par.
Sounds like a lot, the value is tremendous.
It covers all the costs while they're there.
Everything, equipment, food, travel, transportation, housing, staffing, admin, medical, it's all covered.
Okay. And those, I've watched them out there, you know, when you guys are out, just, you know, our kids out there, it's just amazing.
It's fun stuff, man, there's a reason we all do it for decades.
Yeah.
It really is.
All right. I'm good. We're running a little behind, but...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for considering this, we very much appreciate this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming all this way tonight, you know? I'm glad the weather was okay, the traffic, right?
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll just say, probably speaks to the fact that it is so incredibly difficult to find good, solid places for us to be. It's a very big challenge, and, you know, I jumped at the chance to try to, you know, make this partnership with...
Man, I heard they were looking, and I jumped at the chance, too, man. This is a rare opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I'm guessing, since most of us just got here, we don't need a break, so Rob, let's just roll to our regular meeting, shall we?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call to order our December 3rd meeting. Let's begin with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice. Okay. Roll call attendance, please.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Ms. Delongo?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Putney?
Ms. Santiago?
Here.
Mr. Stacy?
Ms. Torrello?
Here.
Dr. Delucia?
Here. Okay. For reports this evening, I honestly really don't have much, except to thank the drum corps for coming for their presentation. It was really great to get to hear exactly what we would be getting from such a partnership, and I thank you, thank you. I really do think it's a great opportunity, and I'm sure once all our board members are able to take a look at the full presentation, that they may feel the same. So again, thank you. For correspondence this evening, we did get one, one kind of reminding us of a date conflict for one of our future board meetings, and the other, again, voicing their support of the Seventh Regiment marching band partnership, so. And that was from Mrs. Derbark, sure. And that is it. I don't believe there was anything else, correct? Is this the only correspondence?
That was it.
Okay, cool. You didn't have anything else, did you? No, all right. Standing committee reports.
No personnel.
No? And policy, a bit, we're going to be going over some tonight. Everything, I think, that we've covered is basically mandated, so it's not really much to discuss. These are just the new Title IX changes. And then we did bring about the community relations policy on rental waivers. However, I think we should bring that back when we have more board members.
Do you, I mean, did they need...
Well, three that are absent actually wanted to go over the policy, so...
They did?
Yeah. Jack, Karen, Mary Ann. So we're going to, I think, postpone that. I don't think it's anything that's urgent. Anyone feel an urgent need to go over community relations, I think, 1330? No? No? All right, okay then. All right, so superintendent report.
I'm going to let Lisa share some exciting news that we received today.
One of our seniors got notification that he was accepted to Yale University with a full ride scholarship. He was notified yesterday, I think, and it's Anthony Arcangelo. I asked him this morning when I saw him if it was okay to share, and he said it was fine. He was very excited. Search is over, he's done, but it's been a while since we had an acceptance at Yale, so we're all really excited for him.
It's exciting.
I do think...
Congratulations. Congratulations. All right, nice.
Awesome.
Okay. COFO?
Just there, nothing else, and supplementing nothing additional.
Yeah. Okay. Our audience of citizens portion of this evening.
Acceptance of minutes.
All right, we actually have someone.
Oh, you should have accepted.
I'll do it like that. You know, Chris, before you start, I'll go ahead and say, meeting minutes. Does anyone have any objection or modification for meeting minutes? No? The meeting minutes are accepted. Chris, please, go ahead.
Chris Prado, 17 Doggettuck Street, East Haven. I just wanted to get up here and speak after being here for the workshop and speak on the partnership with the band and drum corps. I think it was an excellent presentation that you guys made, in full support of any type of partnership that helps our students out. As someone that grew up with the marching band in this school and over the years and be a part of the drum line and everything, there's a real long history of excellence with our music program in this town, and I think this is something that will just help improve it more, and I really urge the board members to take advantage of this opportunity to just help our students out and further their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? Just give me one second. Yeah, you just got to give your address, and, yeah, sure.
Hi, my name is Ray Luden, East Haven. Just a quick story. 60 years ago, my father founded the Connecticut Classics Drum and Bubblie Corps, which was based here in East Haven, Connecticut, on the premise that even 60 years ago, not all kids were athletes and were going to play sports. My father competed in the, with the Connecticut Hurricanes and with a group of two or three others at our address on 103 George Street, founded the Connecticut Classics in 1964, the year I was born. So I was born a drum corps brat and was lugged around the whole Northeast as a kid until I became old enough, not to be forced on the field, because by then it's in your blood, it's never going to get away from you. So I started marching at 10-years-old, 10-years-old, that then is called a soprano, but it's a trumpet nowadays, call it what you want. Both of my sisters marched as well, my parents were active with the corps, my father stayed as director until 1976, 12 years, and the corps grew and grew and grew, and we were an integral part of East Haven. And what I want to say to you all is the support that this town gave to the Connecticut Classics way back then was remarkable. And we used to do booster drives, which seemed so, I mean, it would never happen nowadays, but we used to go door-to-door in our uniforms on a Saturday and a Sunday of the weekend and try and raise money to support the kids that couldn't afford to march. We did paper drives, we did everything you can imagine. So Steve was saying that potentially, you know, Seventh Regiment would do a standstill on the Green for, you know, Toddson Green. So some of you might remember, the Classics on opening night of Pompeii Carnival, used to do our show every single year, the opening night of the carnival, because at the church, that's where we have our Christmas czar, and Father Hussey also allowed us to run our bingo game there, which was great for our fundraising initiatives. So I marched until 81. I also played football at East Haven, I was captain of the golf team, and I was also in the high school band under Erwin Shapiro. And I don't know when he ended his gig, and who was after that, and how it became Steve, but to see where the band program has gone since I graduated 40 years ago, 42 years ago, is pretty remarkable. And for this town now to be able to kind of regroup its commitment to drum corps and supporting kids who have incredible musical abilities and passion and the desire to grow and be better is, to me, fabulous. A great thing, in 1994, we had our 30-year reunion for the corps, and Mike Lawler, he was a state rep in East Haven for the longest time, he put together this commemoration, really cool. I was looking for it at my house, and I couldn't find it, very disappointing, and it gave us this whole thing of the Classics and all, and we presented it to us at the reunion. My father passed away in 2007, and the following year, the Memorial Day Parade, April Capone was the bearer, and she proclaimed that day, the Memorial Day Parade, Connecticut Classics Day, in honor of my dad who had passed. So the parade ended at the Green, and a large group of people, including horn players, went to my father's gravesite, down by the Child Museum, and played tabs for him. So it tells you, after all that time, first, like, my dad, and not just him, but so many people that are still heavily involved, like these folks, were dedicated to that and to the kids, and to support the kids that were not traditional athletes. So I thank you guys for the opportunity, and I thank you for letting me say my little piece, and I hope this all works out, it'll be a great benefit.
Thank you. All right. Anyone online? No? Still? Okay. So we'll move on to do new business, 6.1. Well, we're going to actually bypass that, we'll wait to revise it. I know we wanted to add something, but I think everyone should be here to kind of go over that. But as for discussion and policy on the revision of policy and regulation, 400.1, Title IX Personnel, you have it in your packet, you'll notice all the red, this is all strictly state legislation mandated, and if there's any questions or comments on these changes, maybe any clarification on? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Motion to accept the revision of policy and regulation 400.1, Title IX Personnel.
Right. Second? Questions or comments? Nope? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Torrello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
That brings us to 6.3, discussion and possible action on the revision of policy and regulations 5145.44, Title IX Students. Again, same situation, new legislation mandated. If, again, if there's no clarifiers, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to approve policy and regulation 5145.44, Title IX Students.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve policy and regulation 5145.44, Title IX students.
I second that.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. DeLongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Torelo?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, so that brings us to 6.4, discussion and possible action on the approval of the rental fee waiver requests for the East Haven High School co-op marching band and Seventh Regiment drum and Dugel Corps. I know many were not able to join us for the presentation. I didn't know if they had any questions that, for clarification for anything, before asking for a motion. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the rental fee waiver request for the East Haven High School co-op marching band and Seventh Regiment drum and Dugel Corps.
I second that.
Okay, so now would be a good time for any questions or comments that you might have while we have representatives from the board here. Everybody's good? Roll call.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. DeLongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
No.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Torelo?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Five in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Okay. This brings us to discussion and possible action on the purchase of full-page ad advertisement in the 2024-2025 yearbook, as we do every year. You'll see a copy of the ad in front of you. I'm pretty sure everyone's clear on what this is, so I'm just going to go ahead and ask for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve a full-page advertisement in the 2024-2025 East Haven High School yearbook.
I'll second. All right. Clarifying questions, comments?
That's the limit. We do this every year.
It's, I thought I read $400, is that correct?
That is correct.
Just to clarify.
Full page, yeah.
Yeah.
It was four. Right.
Okay. Roll call.
Did I get a second? I'm sorry.
Yeah, just...
Oh, thank you.
She should be very quiet for seconds tonight.
Sorry.
Whisper.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. DeLongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Torelo?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
All in favor, motion passes.
This brings us to 6.6, discussion and possible action on the 2025 BOE meeting schedule. You'll see a revised copy in front of you this evening. There's just really one change to the November dates.
I'm sorry. I'm good.
So I didn't know if anyone had any questions on the other dates. You will notice that in November, in December, we will just be having one meeting. And that's just because of all the, I think everyone knows what their calendar is like, those two months. So there's probably not many questions on mine. But we picked November. It's, the week before was Veterans Day, which is why we switched it to be the week before Thanksgiving, so... And then same with December, of course, with the holiday. We're going to December 9th.
And that's what we do this afternoon, or if you have...
Yeah, well, no, I don't think anyone's coming for a board meeting on December 23rd. If you are, I'll send you all a Christmas card. We have your desk when you get here, because I won't be.
Should we change to one meeting in like July and August?
I do, but I don't know which, because I want to see where we are. We most, of course, will probably cancel one each month. We're not going to come here just to meet. If we have business, we have business. I just don't know which one. So I didn't, you know, if you guys want to choose a date, I mean, I'm good with that. Or we could just, because last year, we decided to keep them and then cancel as we went.
Because people...
There's also a lot of projects, so I think we should just see how it goes.
Yeah.
Usually in the summer, things come up.
Yeah.
Play by year.
Just in case, rather than having to put some bad...
It's forcing people to take vacations, maybe, in a time, during a time when they want...
Oh, no. I mean, it's open to change, but this just makes it easier because when we do a meeting where it's a special meeting, we have the, we have those regulations around the agenda, what we could put on it. So we would only be able to do like a single topic. You know what I mean? And you can change things and... But we could.
But if everyone wants to, I mean, I'm open to a...
It's not easier to leave them than...
That's what we, that's actually what you said. You said, "Leave them," so now we could just...
Want to make a motion?
Who said that?
Yeah, if there's no clarifying questions. Oh, and just to point out, just so everyone's aware, the second meeting in June. Rather than having three meetings, we're just going to do the superintendent's presentation. It will only be that that night on June 24th.
Perfect.
Okay? Rather than a third meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the 2025 Board of Ed meeting schedule.
I will second that.
Great. Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. DeLongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Torelo?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay. Future agenda items, please, again...
Can I add, can I add a 6.7?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. I'd like to add 6.7, which would be discussion and possible action on the approval to add the revision of policy 5145.4, non-discrimination, section 504, to the agenda. There's a hard copy on your desk. This is sort of like a parallel policy to the final rule, Title IX policy. It had some inaccurate information. It hasn't been looked at since 2020. When it was last reviewed, it wasn't even revised. And I'd like the board's consideration in those updates this evening.
So first, I make a motion that we...
Add the item.
We add...
Item 6.7.
6.7, which would be the approval of revision of 5145.4. I don't guess...
Which number?
5.4, you said?
5145.4.
Point four. You're on. Fine.
You walked it before me, it's four off.
All right.
So I made that motion to add that.
Okay. And I think it, again, you'll...
I'll...
Okay. I think, again, you'll see that this is just kind of a cleanup. Everything is in alignment. If there's any specific that you have questions on?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is there any current outstanding 504 that this is interfering with or is going to affect once this change takes place? Like, that is open currently, that this, once this change happens today, that tomorrow, there's going to be an issue?
No.
Because this relates to Title IX.
This relates to 504, which is non-discrimination. Title IX is like a form of sexual harassment discrimination. So it was just a policy that sort of surfaced. And when I was looking at Title IX policy and did a search, it popped up and I noticed that it had a very old pupil services director's name on it. And when I started looking at it closer and compared it to Shipman and Goodwin's model policy, I realized it needed some tightening. Including some of the statutes, newer ones were not referenced.
So, 504.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the revision of the non-discrimination 504 policy,
Second. I'm just, I'm not going to wait. Okay.
Okay. So we have... Dr. Delusha, second. All right.
Any questions or comments?
No, this is to add it.
Yeah, this is to add it. No questions on adding?
I'm doing it.
We're all good? All right, roll call to add 6.7.